Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to open our meeting?
I'll move.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Should we, we should do the process.
Okay, so, um, good evening, everyone. We have two new board members, Tim McNamara and Allison Steinbauer. I ask you, Tim, to stand and would you please read your opening.
I, Tim McNamara, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my abilities.
Allison.
I, Allison Steinbauer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Can we just pause for a second for a photo op? I think Allison's family is here. I'd like them to come around. Oh, I'd like to pause if that's okay, because we've been waiting here. Are we ready? Okay, great. Yes!
That's so sweet.
Good work.
That's so sweet.
Okay.
I, Christine Ackerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of superintendent of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
So now we move on to the election of board president and vice president for the 25-26 school year. Kaylee, can I call for a motion?
Can I have a motion for item 1.1.1?
I move. I move that Kaylee Huang be elected president of the Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 1.1.2?
I move that Alyssa Dorfman be elected vice president of the Chapakua Central School District for the 25-26 school year.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 1.1.3? At least.
I move that Lisa Elsner be appointed district clerk of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I, Lisa Elsner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk of the Chapakua Central School District to the best of my ability.
I, Kaylee Huang, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
I, Alyssa Dorfman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District to the best of my ability.
Okay, so I just want to say that we're. I just want to say that we're going to do things a little bit differently, and it might be a little bit bumpy. We have one board member on Zoom, and we don't have a script today because of the timing of how the board meeting is taking place. So, we're going to lean a lot on our district clerk, Lisa. So we will start with item 2.1. Can I have a motion for that?
I move that in the absence of the district clerk, Dr. Christine Ackerman and Laura Moreno be appointed school district clerk pro tempore of the Chapakua Central School District for the 25-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.2, school district treasurer?
I move that Jose Guevara be appointed school district treasurer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I have a motion for item 2.3, school district deputy treasurer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed school district deputy treasurer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second? Matt?
I'll second. Can you hear me?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.4, can I have a motion for 2.4?
I move.
Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I move that Jose Guevara be appointed central treasurer, extra classroom activity funds of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for 2.5, attendance officers?
I move that building administrators or their designees shall be appointed attendance officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second? All in favor? Item 2.6, may I have a motion for asbestos management plan designee?
I move that Mario Martinez be appointed asbestos management plan designee of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. 2.7, can I have a motion for claims auditor?
I move that Jonathan Ross be appointed claims auditor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. 2.8, may I have a motion for co-chief emergency officers?
I move that Mario Martinez and Josh Colwell Block be appointed co-chief emergency officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.9, may I have a motion for 504 compliance officers, title II ADA compliance officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Yasmin, I apologize in advance if I'm not saying this correctly, Halu Carey, be appointed 504, title II ADA compliance officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor? May I have a motion for 2.10, student disability discrimination compliance coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Yasmin Halu Carey be appointed student disability discrimination compliance coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for 2.11, CSC/CPSC committee members?
I move that individuals listed on the attached memo from Karen Smith be appointed to the committees on special education and preschool, special education of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.12, McKinney-Vento homeless liaisons?
I move that Karen Smith and Yasmin Halu Carey be appointed McKinney-Vento homeless liaisons of the Chapakua Central School District for the 25-26 school year.
May I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.13, IHO rotational list?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2025-26 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in Chapakua Central School District. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with policy 3030.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.14, Medicaid compliance officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Yasmin Halu Carey be appointed Medicaid compliance officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.15, payroll certification officers?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Andrew Corsilia be appointed payroll certification officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.16, property control manager?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed property control manager of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.17, purchasing agent?
I move that Ann Homequest be appointed purchasing agent of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.18, records management and access officer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed records management and access officer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 2.19, school district attorney?
I move that Shaw Carlson May and Lambert LLP be appointed as school district attorney of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.20, school district auditor?
I'll move that the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP be appointed as school district external auditor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.21, audit committee community members?
I move that Matthew White, Fred Wang, Alan Colaco, and Emma Peng be appointed as community members of the audit committee of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.22, school district bond council?
I move that the firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP be appointed as school district bond council of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.23, school district fiscal advisor?
I move that the firm of Bernard P. Donigan Incorporated be appointed to school fiscal, school district fiscal advisor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.24, district title IX coordinators?
I move that Sandra Seppi, Jeff Curtis, Laura Lynn Stewart, Deborah Alsbach, Tanya Wilson, and Alyssa Stover be appointed district title IX coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 2.25, district title IX investigators?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Yasmin Halu Carey be appointed district title IX investigators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.26, district title IX decision maker?
I move that Andrew Corsilia be appointed district title IX decision maker of the Chapakua Central School District of the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.27, district title VI and title VII compliance officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Yasmin Halu Carey be appointed title VII and title, I'm sorry, title VI and title VII compliance officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 25-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 2.28, DASSA coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia, Yasmin Halu Carey, Sandra Seppi, Karime Soto, Ronald Gamma, Christina Mauricio, Joseph Sullivan, Jeff Curtis, Laura Lynn Stewart, Jessica Rappaport, Deborah Alsbach, Ryan Spillane, Tanya Wilson, Nadia Bufer, Alyssa Stover, and Andrea Shaver be appointed DASSA coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.29, depositories?
I move that JP Morgan Chase, New York Class, New York LAF, and TD Bank be designated as depositories for the funds of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.30, investments?
I move that Jose Guevara, treasurer, and Josh Colwell Block, deputy treasurer, be authorized to take appropriate action in the investment of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.31, newspaper of record?
I move that for the purpose of advertising bids and other legal notices of the Chapakua Central School District during the 2025-26 school year, the Journal News, as the newspaper of record, The Examiner, and the New York Times be designated.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.32, petty cash?
I move that petty cash accounts in accordance with policy be approved for the 2025-26 school year as follows: superintendent's office $100, Douglas G. Grafflin Elementary School[1009.36][1009.36]$100, Roaring Brook Elementary School $100, West Orchard Elementary School $100, Horace Greeley High School $100, Robert E. Bell Middle School $100, and Seven Bridges Middle School $100.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 2.33, treasurer's bond?
I move that a treasurer's bond in the amount of $100,000 as executed by NYSER be approved as to form and sufficiency for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.34, data protection officer?
I move that Andrew Taylor be appointed data protection officer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 2.35, internal auditor?
I move that Maraki Smith LP be appointed as internal auditor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2025-26 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We did it. On to item number three.
I thought we did quite well, given the circumstances.
Yes, we did. President's report. So Christine, is this where I give my first president's report?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good thing I got ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone. As we begin the 2025-26 school year, I want to extend my deepest welcome and gratitude to each of you, our students, families, educators, staff, and community partners. A new year brings with it the chance to reflect, reset, and recommit to the work that truly matters, serving and supporting every student. This year, I approach my role as board president with a renewed commitment to our students and with deep respect for the people who make their learning possible, our teachers, staff, administrators, and families. You are the heart of our schools. I believe leadership is not about striving for perfection but about showing up, being present, growing openly, and working through the challenges together. I believe in leading by example and modeling with humility, honesty, and compassion, a willingness to learn alongside our staff, our families, and especially our students. I believe in the power of sitting through and living through the process, not avoiding discomfort but walking through it together by leaning on each other. Growth often happens not from quick fixes but from consistent presence and ongoing honest reflection. This year, we will focus on re-centering our work around students, ensuring they are seen, heard, and supported in every classroom and every building, supporting our teachers and staff not only with resources but with respect, trust, and time, prioritizing relationships because connection is our foundation, because we are not alone, strengthening our community partnerships knowing that schools cannot thrive in isolation, and investing in sustainable practices such as budget management to long-term planning and equity work. As a board, we are committed to fostering a culture of transparency, collaboration, and shared responsibility. Thank you educators for the tireless care you pour into our students. Thank you families for your continued support and partnership, and to my fellow board members, thank you in advance for your service and dedication this upcoming year. And to our students, you are why we do this work. We are here to support your growth, your voice, and your dreams. We are here for you. We believe in you. Here's to a new year of connection and growth. Thank you. And that's it for my president's report. Okay. Yes. So can I have a motion to move 3.1.1?
I'll move. I'm sorry. I'll move the Board of Education Committee liaison assignments.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor? We're going to post it. Yes, I do write it down. Can I have a motion for, oh, did we all in favor?
Did we vote on that one?
Did we all vote on that? Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 3.1.2?
I move the 2025-26 Board of Education meeting schedule. And move that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2025-26 Board of Education meeting schedule.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we are at 3.2, the superintendent's report. Okay, welcome everyone to the new year. Congratulations Kaylee and Alyssa, and I want to welcome Yasmin, Allison, and Tim to the board table. On your first day, you've been working since 8:00 AM. And so we appreciate that the board participates in the administrative retreat. We think that's a great opportunity for us to work together and kind of think about like education and what it looks like in the future by participating in sessions run by our staff, run by outside experts, and so we're looking forward to an excellent new school year, and we welcome our new members of the team and our new leadership team. And just a few highlights on the agenda. We have a rather large resolution about the guardhouse, so Josh, do you want to just talk about that?
Sure. So as part of the process through the last school year and through the budget cycle, we approved, the community approved the construction of a guardhouse at the entrance to Greeley. We are able to get state aid on that guardhouse by declaring it a security emergency so that we don't have to wait through the whole process. It's less than 50 square feet. It doesn't have very many utilities in it, so there's a resolution to declare this an official emergency so that we can then send it up to state ed for approval to get funds back from the state for this and be able to construct this as close as possible or by the end of the summer without having to wait for the entire school year for an approval process.
And then on the agenda tonight, we have a lot of rollover contracts and a lot of language around supporting students that have to go to school over the summer. We have our food services contract, our lawyer contracts, we have our bus contracts, and we also have our contracts about Ellen Doherty on the agenda, and she provides executive coaching for the administrative staff around retention, stress management, culture, community, and belonging, and identity work. She also works with our DEI faculty, and that is aligned with our recommendations from our equity audit. Both are connected to the strategic plan, and she's been working with us a few years, and now she has, over the course of this year, provided some specialized support to our staff around bereavement, around conflict management with other staff members. So in the board's backup, you got a letter from the president of the Administrators Association just kind of articulating the importance of this opportunity for our administrative team and then our larger staff when necessary to have this level of support in terms of their work here in the district. So I did want to just highlight that we are recommending we move forward again with a consultant agreement with her. She's also done some work with the Board of Education in the past as well on the retreat. The other, and those, so those are the two big things on the contract, if you were, are going to call them big. Everything else is very procedural, so I just want to highlight that our offices are closed on the third. We have our second day of our retreat tomorrow, and then we start to get ready to welcome our athletes back, and we've set our August meeting date, which is August 7th, where we are going to approve our tax warrant, and so it's, it's hard to believe that we're going to start preparing for next year, but that's what we do all summer long. So we're here if any parents want to speak with us, and we're looking forward to welcoming. I think on the seventh, our student board member will be participating in that meeting around his summer schedule, so I look forward to welcoming him to the district as well. And that's the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you. Okay. So, oh, here we are. Public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone after the public comment period has been completed. Board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Any public comment? There's anyone? No, I don't see anyone. Okay, so we'll move on to item number four, approvals and ratification. So Lisa, can we take these all together, 4.1 through 4.5? Okay. So can I have a motion for 4.1 and 4.2?
I'll move that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the June 16th, 2025 Board of Ed work session, and 4.2, that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of June 17th, 2025 board meeting.
And may I have a second? May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstaining? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? And, and anyone abstaining? Thank you. Can I have a motion for 4.3?
I move that the Board of Education waive second reading of policy 9040, non-aligned administrative and confidential staff personnel policy, and that upon the first reading of this policy as presented at this meeting, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy 9040, non-aligned administrative and confidential staff personnel policy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Maybe I would just share for people that are watching or watching this on, and another time, the policies that are up for adoption tonight are name changes based on new personnel.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 4.4, policy 5080?
I move that the Board of Education hereby waives a second reading of policy 5080, Title IX sexual harassment policy for students, and that upon the first reading of this policy as presented at this meeting, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy 5080, Title IX sexual harassment policy for students.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion for 4.5, policy 9049?
I move that the Board of Education hereby waives a second reading of policy 9049, Title IX sexual harassment policy for employees, and move that upon the first reading of this policy as presented at this meeting, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy 9049, Title IX sexual harassment policy for employees.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item five, recommended action.
I recommend 5.1 instructional as presented.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Oh, no. A motion. Can I have a motion for five point one instructional?
I'll move that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the attached agreements for services for the individuals and eight- Yeah. Yes.
As presented.
Yeah. Okay. I move item five point one as presented.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend five point two, non-instructional as presented.
May I have a motion for five point two? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item six, recommended action. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. Can I have a motion for six point one through? Yes, would anybody like to move, remove anything from the consent agenda? Matt?
I have a question about an item, but I don't need to remove it.
Okay, so are we okay with doing it all together? Okay, can I have a motion for item six point one through six point one seven?
I'll move. Item six point one through six point one seven.
Can I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, Josh, do you mind just talking about the contract for Aramark, the extension? Has out, how it relates to, um, the fact that we're, every child's gonna get free lunch next year, and for any parents who are watching, how they, how that happens?
Yeah, sure. So we are participants in the National School Lunch Program, and our contract with Aramark has always adhered to the National School Lunch Program. The Free Lunch Act from the state requires a school to be part of that, which we already are. So we're able to renew our contract that we have with Aramark, and then we'll receive reimbursement for all lunches that students enter their PIN number, get a school lunch at no cost during every school day. Um, Aramark will record that, they'll do the paperwork for it, send it up monthly to the state, and then we'll receive the reimbursement. Um, Aramark will bill us about a month behind for the food, the same time we'll get the reimbursement, so there won't be any lag time with what the district is, um, paying for the school lunches, free lunches, and that Aramark is receiving for the school lunches. So everything basically essentially will operate as is, um, just parents will not be paying for the school lunches for their students.
But if they, if the child wants a snack or another item, parents pay for that. It's just the main course that they're not paying.
So anything that's designated as a school lunch, which is a wide array of things at the high school and the middle school, and the regular school lunch at our elementary schools.
So parents still need to fund the lunch account, just in theory, less.
Yes, if they would like their students to receive snacks or double portions or, um, any à la carte items, they still need to fund the school lunch accounts.
We know how to do this too, because we did this during COVID.
I was gonna say, it's exactly how it happened during COVID.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to item seven. Can we move all of these contracts approved by the superintendent for Board Policy sixty eighty-five, purchasing and bidding? Um, can I have a motion for item seven point one to seven point four?
I'll move seven point one through seven point four.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing under eight or nine. Uh, notice of future meetings. Next meeting is Thursday, August seventh, twenty twenty-five, seven PM at the Horace Greeley High School Auditorium, and it will be the tax warrant meeting. Okay, so back to the academic comments. Okay, and then Thursday, August twenty-eighth, at ten AM, will be at Greeley Academic Commons, which is right here. Um, and that would be opening day. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-nine PM?
I move, I always move the adjournment, Tim.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.